Good evening and welcome to the May 1st, 2013 inaugural meeting of the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission. This public meeting has been called on application for rezoning and other matters pursuant to the Brookhaven zoning ordinance and specified in tonight's agenda. This May 1st, 2013 meeting is called to order. I'm going to take a roll call, see if we have a quorum. If you just acknowledge that you're here, Commissioner Shannon Cameron.
Present.
Commissioner Adrian Schmidt.
Here.
Commissioner John Funny.
Here.
And on my left, Commissioner John Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Jack Hunderd.
Present.
Commissioner Rob Francore.
Here.
And I'm Stan Siegel, and I will preside this evening. So we have seven members present. If we record that, as we do have a quorum, we can proceed. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone if you'll just silence your cell phones or shut them off. I'm silent, so I'm okay. I'd like to recognize, see if we have any elected officials out here. We don't, so I'm going to recognize the staff. There's Mr. Howard Coontz, who's the city planner for the City of Brookhaven; Ms. Susan Cannon, who's the Director of Community Development for the City of Brookhaven. We should have a number of copies of the agenda and any other related documents in the back of the room on the table under the clock. If you'll be making comments tonight, and there -- I think there are public comments back there, but we -- yeah. The Planning Commission is established by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brookhaven. We conduct public hearings on land use, zoning changes, co-text amendments, and other related land use matters. This commission is an advisory board which reports its findings and recommendations for consideration for actions to the mayor and the city council of the City of Brookhaven. So it's important to understand that we are an advisory board, and final decisions are made by the council and the mayor. All right, with the agenda, we have no minutes to approve because this is our very first meeting. I keep looking at Susan, saying, "There aren't any minutes." I didn't think so. All right. We have a few organizational items we need to address first, and the first is to adopt a set of rules and procedures that we'll use as we go forward in the Planning Commission. Were there copies back there?
There are.
There are copies back there, okay. I guess I'll read the first page. Okay, this is a resolution adopting and approving rules and procedures for the Planning Commission meetings. Whereas well-organized meetings allow a planning commission to reach decisions in a fair and consistent manner, and whereas efficiency is served when the process of planning and conducting public meetings is clearly stated and understood by public officials and citizens, and whereas public participation and access to the governmental decision-making process is a key element of an open and transparent organization. Now therefore be it resolved that all meetings of the Brookhaven Planning Commission shall be conducted in accordance with provisions of this meeting organization ordinance as outlined in the attached rules and procedures. Section 1, that the rules and procedures for the Planning Commission meetings are adopted and attached heretofore as if fully set forth herein; and section 2, that this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption, so resolved as first day of May 2013. So I guess the next thing we'll open for discussion, does the staff have anything to add to?
Actually, I was going to walk to the podium. I'm used to doing that, but...
Okay, well, would you like to walk to the podium and identify yourself, as everyone else will?
Mr. Chairman.
No, you've got to turn it on. Yours is?
Looking for the yeah turn-on button. It's a strict time.
Yes, sir.
Here we go.
You have to have glasses to see -- is it working?
It is.
You have to have glasses to see the on/off button. Mr. Chairman, thank you for going over the resolution. We actually reviewed these procedures in our work session recently, and they have been provided in the back of the room. The very first page basically goes over the fact that we do have open meetings and that we do record our meetings. It identifies that a quorum requires four members, and that the voting requirements for making decisions and abstentions. And basically, the second part of the resolution talks about the opening of the public hearing, that the chairman opens the meeting, a report of the staff then is presented, the applicant then follows with their presentation, with a time limit of 10 minutes. Part of that time can be reserved for rebuttal at the end after the public hearing continues. The public also has 10 minutes for each side, both those opposed or in favor. So there will be an opportunity for the public to speak on each case. And at the end of that, if there's any time left from the applicant's first presentation, he'll have an opportunity for rebuttal. He or she would have an opportunity for rebuttal. And at that point, the hearing would be closed, and then this body would then be left to formulate the recommendation to the mayor council. That's basically the wrap-up of the procedures that we would be adopting tonight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cannon. With that, do we have a motion on the resolution?
I move that we accept the resolution as presented for the adoption and the approval of rules and procedures for the Planning Commission meetings here on May 1st, 2013.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, do we have any discussion on the motion before -- on this motion before us? Okay, all in favor of adopting the resolution for the rules and procedures as placed before us, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, so all opposed? By a vote of 7 to 0, the motion to adopt the resolution of rules and procedures is approved. Can we get the first one done, all right?
Very good.
We haven't -- all right, we're getting there. All right, we're on a roll here.
We're 1 for 1.
I know, we're Citizens Committee, we have to...
(laughing)
No, it's a professional -- we're not professionals here. All right, item number two on the organization and procedural items, this nomination and election of a vice chair, I guess in case I'm not here or something happens to me. So the nominations are now in order for a vice chair of this planning commission.
Nomination to nominate Commissioner Funny for that position?
Okay, we have a nomination for Commissioner John Funny. Are there any further nominations? Yeah, so, 1, 2, 3, the nominations are...
And then a...
The nominations are...
Motion and second.
Yeah, okay, the nominations are closed at this point, right? Okay, so do we have a...
I'll second.
Second? Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Funny as the vice chair, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? None, so the ayes have it, and Commissioner John Funny is elected vice chair of this planning commission. Number two. (laughing) Think of how I know. Don't miss any meetings, all right? All right, let's move on. We're just ripping through this agenda. We have no -- is there any unfinished business? There shouldn't be any, because we...
We never met.
Yes, our inaugural meeting. And new business, I guess I'll need to -- before we take up the application, before what's on there, I'm going to go through -- Ms. Cannon read briefly what the procedures are, but I think before we do any application, I'm going to run through them very quickly just in general so that you can hear and understand how we deal with an application. The city staff will present a summary of the application and report any recommendations or findings on an application. Then the applicant or their representative would have, as Ms. Cannon said, 10 -- a total of 10 minutes upfront, or reserve a portion of the time as a rebuttal, but only 10 minutes. Will then have a 10 minutes for public comment on the application. Each speaker will need to submit a comment card before they speak, then they'll have to state your name and address and current address as you come forward. Please be aware that that's 10 minutes for everyone, so you need to be, you know, just cognizant of that, be brief, state your position on the application before us, and help us understand why you've taken that position. We're here to understand and here to learn. Then the applicant will have the remainder of their 10 minutes, if there was any left over, if they've reserved any. Then we'll close the public portion of the meeting, and we as commissioners will then have an opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant, the staff, or any of the speakers. We then vote on -- we would then vote on the matter before us. So the new business, this is application RZ 13-01. Brad Hughes of Rockhaven Homes LLC located 11 Lumpkin Street, Suite 200 Lawrenceville, Georgia, 30046, seeks the following: rezoning of a 3.9 acre parcel located at 1475 North Druid Hills Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, 30319, from R 75 to RM 75 to allow for the construction of a 40-unit townhome project. The tax parcel number of the subject property is 18-200-04-042. And now I'd like to ask the staff if there's any comment or anything you'd like to present on the application.
Mr. Chairman, as it relates to case RZ 13-01, the case, as you've stated, is correct. The staff has received a request for deferral. The applicant -- the actual attorney for the applicant is here tonight, and he will -- he needs to address that issue with you.
All right, I'd like to invite the attorney for the applicant, if you'll identify yourself as you come forward, and I guess we've been asked to have him just speak into the -- you've got some experience with this, so...
Yeah. Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Doug Dillard with wives of Noack Curry Wilco. We represent Residential South Partners. We own this case two days ago, and we have filed an amendment authorization from the owner, along with the request that this be held for 60 days to the date certain for your next regularly scheduled meetings within that timeframe. I've talked to Susan today about what those dates are. I think we're looking at a July 3 meeting for you, a July 23 meeting for Campbell. And we also understand that any amended site plan needs to be filed by May 31.
May 31st.
May 31st. So we want an opportunity to meet with the neighbors. We think there might be some significant changes to the site plan that's been filed by Rockhaven, so we want an opportunity to meet with the neighborhood and try to reach an agreement. So with that, we would ask that this matter be continued until those dates, and that if there's any opposition to that, I would ask that my remaining time be reserved for rebuttal. But we're hopeful that we can meet with the neighborhood, meet with Susan and Howard, and have a positive recommendation for you at your July meeting.
All right, thank you, thanks, sir. Given that there is a request for deferral, I think the appropriate -- see if there's any motion on the commission at this time.
I make a motion that we grant deferral for 60 days to allow the applicant or the applicant's successor to meet with the neighborhood and revise the plan as they see fit, come back before us.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, and all right, now I'm going to open up. Do we have any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Funny?
Thank you. I think the deferral is great, and I think Mr. Dillard's statement is very important that he would like to meet with the community, which is a great thing. And I know this...
Can you hear me?
I know this previous application was posted, and I know some of you here may have some comments. You cannot speak to this particular application because you do realize that it's changing form, but I think because people are here, and you've taken time on your busy schedule to be here, you cannot speak directly to this application, but you can speak in general about your concern about our community. So if you do, I think I would like to put a motion -- well, there is a motion on the floor, but I would like...
There is a motion before us.
I would like for the chairman to take that in consideration as we have people here that may have some...
Right now, we have a motion on the floor to defer this application. Commissioner Hess, you had a comment?
It was pretty much what Mr. Funny just said, that I want to thank the citizens that came out and request that if there's a point of discussion that while they cannot address this point in particular, that if there's something to be discussed, that they want the board to know about the topic in general, that there should be an opportunity since they're here.
We'll entertain the other motions after we vote on that. Is there any other discussion on that?
And before you take a vote, I'd just like to add, for the public, we will be re-advertising, we will repost for public hearing, and we will re-mail notices to the adjacent 250-foot radius parking owners.
I should probably also add, this commission will get more comfortable with this whole process.[940.91][940.91](laughing) But bear with us as we go through this. So we currently have -- okay, Commissioner?
I have one question, and perhaps this is for Susan. With regard to Mr. Dillard's proposed neighborhood meetings and just the topic of neighborhood meetings in general, is there a central repository or place to go for the public to see when those meetings are being scheduled, or do they have to read it on the sign? How is that...
We do, in our current Brookhaven zoning ordinance, that is not a part of the governmental procedure. The meetings that we have as part of the procedure are the planning commission and city council hearings. So it would be a venue that they would establish on their own.
Okay, do we have any other comments or questions to either the applicant or the staff on this motion? Call the vote on deferring. Application RZ 13-01 for 60 days, the called meeting on that date, I believe, is July 3 at 7:00 p.m.?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so do we...
Take a vote?
All in favor of the deferral, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So by a vote of 7 to 0, this application RZ 13-01 will be deferred until July 3 at 7:00 p.m. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, I'll entertain -- we are ripping through this, but I'm going to entertain any other motions that the commissioners might have. I believe there was...
In reference to my previous statement, I would make a motion that we allow citizens to speak in general about the nature of development within the community and not specifically about the application of this just deferral.
Okay, so we have a motion to open up the meeting for public comment. Is that a fair way of entertaining it? But not specifically about -- we are not going to discuss this application since there is no site plan and the applicant has not had an opportunity. So if you want to talk about our role as a planning commission, your feelings about the community in general, we will open it up for it. Is there a time -- has anybody had a time limit set on that period? 10 minutes?
The public hearing period is 10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay, so that would be 10 minutes you'd have. You'd have a comment card filled out, and you'd come up and present your name and your current address. Okay, so do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this, or are we...
After we dispose of this motion, I might ask if I can make a comment, but...
Yes. Okay. So all in favor of opening up the meeting for a public -- for 10 minutes of public hearing, public commentary, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? None, so 7 to 0. We have 10 minutes for anyone who would like to -- since we are Citizens Advisory Committee, we are appointed, but please say, "Respect the applicant and respect this decision," and do not speak directly to this application.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
And that would simply be to the future applicants or the successor applicants, this may be a good time to identify key members of the neighborhood or key issues in the neighborhood so that you can address them in your first iteration of the plan, so I would encourage -- I would encourage you to, if you have the time, to maybe stay for a few minutes just to hear what some of the key issues are and some of the neighbors are.
All right, state your name and current address, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the commission for the deferral that has just passed as being...
I'm sorry, say your name and current address.
Andrew Cox, KNEUSS, 1284 Park Vista Drive.
All right, thank you.
I reside just south of the site. It's the subject of the... I have just, be brief, and I have just a couple of questions about the procedure that will be followed with regard to this deferral. If I might put that to the staff, just to...
Put it to -- I'll put it to the place.
One is, will there...
Can you talk into the microphone? I'm getting sick.
Is it working? First, will the staff be anticipating meeting with the applicant, and will the staff make itself available to meet with representatives of the neighborhood while it is considering its recommendation relative to this and any other application for reserve?
Is it -- please go through your hole. Just remember, you only have 10 minutes for everyone, so...
That's number one. And number two, will there be another staff recommendation issued before the July 3 meeting? Those are the two.
All right, thank you. Susan, you want to answer?
Sure. Upon receipt of the revised site plan and/or application that we receive from the applicant, we will prepare a new staff report. We will notify through public advertisement, sign on the property, and notices to the public. We will go through the regular process that we go through as a staff to present the report. We will not have a meeting with the neighborhood. If the applicant chooses to have a meeting with the neighborhood, he can certainly do that, but we will be preparing a professional report based on the factors outlined in the ordinance. And we will provide that report to the public online.
I think we need to -- does anybody else have a -- who's there? Yes.
I asked that the staff would meet with the applicant. As what -- in other words, is the staff going to meet with the applicant and not the neighborhood?
No, I don't believe that.
The staff will not meet with the applicant. We will receive their application and prepare a report.
Thank you, all right.
You're welcome.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Jerry Polk. I live at 2250 Matthews Street, which is in the 250-foot boundary around the development. In general, I'm opposed to any higher-density development of that property greater than the current R 75.
Yeah, please speak in general. We don't want to be unfair to the applicant in any...
It is ju -- I'm trying to be general.
Okay.
Okay. And in general, I would like to see staff recommendations that contain more information and data. I don't want to be critical, but there's -- there are no traffic studies, there are just -- and to Mr. Dillard, it is very important to open communication with the neighbors, and we welcome that. We're not against -- I am not against development, but we do want to be involved with it.
Oh, great, thank you so much. Howard, you give the 10-minute time, I'm afraid.
Yeah.
We have 7 minutes and 38 seconds left. And thanks, and we appreciate you all being respectful again. We're trying to just be fair to everybody, and please...
My name is Thomas Porter. I live at 1420 Canucci Drive in Brookhaven Fields. I am regularly pass-through this area. I'm an art director. And in general, I have concerns about old-growth tree canopies being removed. In general, I have concerns that higher densities, while looked at solely from the standpoint of a site plan, are not fully realized in terms of what the mass implications are of buildings and significant masses, especially in other situations where that elevation is higher than the street. I just have -- and I also have concerns that traffic implications be thoroughly studied before any rezoning of any type would be passed, and that that be quantified, as this gentleman said.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you.
I need to ask that you guys speak directly into the microphone, please?
Is this loud enough?
Yeah.
Okay, Tim Barman, 2243 Matthews. We abut the property, so we have probably more implications than most people on this. And as Jerry mentioned... Again, we've deferred the application, so... I understand, so that's great, but in general, I think the issue of an old forest canopy is a big issue. I think traffic analysis is huge, and part of our reason for voting for Brookhaven overall was to improve the quality. And I really question whether any high-density zoning is making Brookhaven better than where we are today. And I think the commission really needs to understand that a lot and really deliberate heavily on that before you support something that's going to go up to create a higher-density zoning. Thanks. Fair enough comment? Yes, sir.
Mike Umar, 2021 Wrightswill Circle, represent the Deveraux Commons Homeowner Association of 58 homes. I echo what everyone has said already with regard to density, with regard to traffic. I'd also like you to consider, seems to me that 250-feet notice on a property is not very large. I think we should consider that in the future as far as mailing things out. We're less than half a mile away and receiving the notice there. I think that's a more...
That's a general comment about...
Yes.
About procedures and...
No, that's not about properties, about the city's procedures. I think it's a little too developer-friendly. Also, having been involved in a number of these with the county, I think that you all should just know that constant deferments, I know this is your first meeting, but constant deferments to developers is not very neighborhood-friendly either, because that seems to be the MO down in DeKalb County. You truck down there, and it's deferred, and you have to do it all over again. I'm sure they're glad it's on July 3, but...
How are we doing our time here? 4 minutes and 23 seconds.
Hi, I'm Terry Sullivan. I'm a 28-year resident in the same property on Brookhaven. It's 1447 North Druid Hills, which is three doors down from the building. I'm echoing again the traffic studies, how important I feel they are. On a weekly basis, I make probably decisions that I'd rather not make to get out of my house. And the 250 feet, this project, whoever does it...
Well, there is no project at this point, that we know.
...will affect more than 250 feet. It affects 25 homes from there to the Marty's Station. Every one of these homes, all of our residents in Brookhaven, probably every morning and every evening in and out of your driveway. If you drive down that street right now, you'll see 10 new concrete pads of people on the even side of the street have had to put in just so they could turn around. They used to back out onto the street. I've seen it grow, I've seen the traffic grow. You can sit for 10 minutes just trying to get out of your driveway. I don't turn towards Brookhaven to shock because I can't. I have to turn toward future public shock. So I really stress that traffic study be in hand and not just turning lanes that help that project. You have to consider the whole street.
I'm going to ask, by the way, Mr. Dillard, I'm going to ask you if you'd like to speak at the end when the 10 minutes is due, just give you a few moments if you'd like, just to, if that's okay.
Hi, good after -- or good evening, it is. Mr. Chairman, thanks for having this open forum, we really appreciate it. My name is Andrew Gudjenski. I'm a homeowner and resident of Brookhaven, also a business owner in Brookhaven. A couple of comments about Brookhaven in general. Number one, I agree with this gentleman right here about old-growth trees. You know, once you remove -- am I close enough? How's that? You know, once you remove them, they're gone. So I think the commission should be very cognizant of when old-growth trees, or any trees for that matter, are potentially going to be removed for development. Potentially, Brookhaven, or I believe Brookhaven very strongly should have tree ordinance. Number two, I'm not opposed to high-volume development. I think there's a place for that in Brookhaven, in appropriate places. Theoretically, around Lenox Park is not appropriate, but, you know, we can discuss that. What else? I think overall, development should improve Brookhaven versus just stuffing people and potential development into Brookhaven. We've all been around Atlanta and seen different areas where development was just encouraged for development's sake. My opinion is Brookhaven should be improved versus just developed. So thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Time for one more, and then minute 25. One more?
Okay.
All right, we'll let you finish up. All right, we'll let you finish up.
My name is Beth Taylor. I'm at 2262 Matthews Street. And I'll just add to the canopies, I brought pictures of the trees. I live on the street where most of the neighbors spoke, and this is what we look at, and if the development cut down the trees.
Again, we don't, we don't know a site plan, we have no.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm just bringing pictures of trees. I'll leave it with you.
All right, I'm gonna, thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Dillard if he has any, if he would like to make a comment, since I say this, we're trying to keep this general, and people come out, so we appreciate it, and it's just, we're learning, we're learning how to do all this, and.
And I appreciate your tolerance, and realize this is your first meeting, but we appreciate your willingness to serve. These are not, these are not easy decisions, particularly as, as the reason in the area goes. Let's see, demographic trends in the future be different from the demographic trends we've had over the last 50 years. But having said all that, I'm very familiar with this area. Over the last 40 years, I've done a good bit of landy's work, I did Lenox Park, I did Deveraux Commons. You know, we've had significant discussions and relationships over the years with the neighborhood, so we're very sensitive to the environmental issues that exist, we're very sensitive to the limitations that exist relative to traffic patterns both on Rockspire and on North Druid Hills Road. We will be prepared to address those issues. I think the plan we've been coming forward with will be an environmentally sensitive plan, but also allow the applicant to achieve a reasonable economic potential. It's not, not highest of best use, that's not the issue. So, we look forward to meeting with all the respective neighborhoods, and we will try to do so. We've got a short period of time to do that, given the May 28 deadline for a new site plan. But we recognize that we're aware of what the staff have recommended, we're also aware of what the applicant had applied for. There will be a new site plan, and I will tell you how and what manner it will be changed, because I don't know, but we are prepared to address the issues of the environmental impact, traffic, and those issues that are rightfully concerned, maybe, we look forward to addressing those, and we look forward to coming to you in July for something that everybody can support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask the, and we're not going to stay much longer. I'm going to ask the commissioners if there's any comments that they would like to make. Commissioner Frank Corr, at the end.
I'd just like to follow up on a common theme that I heard tonight from some of our citizens, and it relates to a request for a traffic study. How would that be incorporated in the staff's responsibility in reviewing an application?
We actually had our Public Works Director review this application, and we had his input into the request for right-of-way and Acel Dcel. And I understand what, where the public is coming from, and later on in the year, when we do the large comprehensive plan and the transportation plan, those issues will be looked at on a larger scale. But this is actually an individual isolated case that does have an impact on your street, and we have to look at the project improvements. At some point, we'll look at system improvements, but for this particular case, we're relying on our, our traffic engineer to, to help us identify what needs to happen in relation to the impact on surrounding properties.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Hunter?
Yes, I'd like to address the neighbors and make a general comment, the neighbors and the developer. An issue that I think is emphasized in the current plan that we're under, and is very important to me personally, is connectivity. We are trying to build a city here, and we're building a city by building community, by building neighborhoods. The way we build neighborhoods is by getting neighbors to interact. We can have intentional interactions such as meetings like this where we all come to one spot, but the most powerful type of interaction in terms of building that fabric that makes a neighborhood are the incidental, the incidental interactions. So, you're out walking your dog, and you see somebody else walking your dog, and you say, oh, that's a good-looking dog, and you strike up a conversation. And with a stroller and a baby, what's a better conversation starter than a baby and a stroller? Or you're jogging through the neighborhood. Now, the past has been, we've seen a lot of enclave developments. It was the standard for a number of years where everybody turned, sort of put a wall around themselves, turned themselves inward and said, okay, I've got this name, I'm Dunwoodie Commons, or, you know, Danforth Heath, or something like that. And they weren't in touch with anybody lived a block away because they didn't walk in the same places, they just didn't see anybody. This site has that potential to be turned inward and be isolated, but it also has a tremendous potential to be joined with the adjacent neighborhoods so that people can walk, or there can be a common space perhaps, a, a park or some other green space that can be shared. So, I just want to leave you with that thought, is as you speak between among yourselves, consider how you can be connected and form a stronger and broader neighborhood overall, and ultimately, a better community and a better city.
Commissioner Hess? No comments at this time, Mr. Commissioner.
First, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for electing me as vice chair. I will make certain that our chairman is never, never miss a meeting? No. But seriously, thank you for inviting me to serve in this capacity. I look forward to working with the communities within Brookhaven to make sure that we have a quality of life within Brookhaven. Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt?
I guess I would just like to direct one quick comment to neighbors and members of the community, people's concerns tonight, certainly one we appreciate, all of us appreciate you taking the time to come down here and tell us in a forum like this, sometimes it's difficult to do if you don't speak publicly for a living, so appreciate that. But I think the comments that I observed, at their core, have a thoughtfulness behind them, and I think that that's something that, as a new city, that all of us are residents of, you know, we want Brookhaven to be a better place to live, obviously, and we want to, we want to see that kind of thoughtfulness. So, recognizing that this is an evolutionary process with regard to protocols and ordinances that are currently in place and those that will be adopted, communication, and as Commissioner Hunter suggested, that there's incidental ways to interact. After you leave here today, you know, get the word out, talk to your friends and neighbors, and, you know, encourage them to get involved and to, you know, participate in the public dialogue opportunities that are afforded to us as part of this process.
Commissioner Cameron?
Well, he said what I wanted to say, which was, thank you guys so much for coming and taking the time. We heard what you said, and I think we're all here to build a better community, and I just want to say thank you guys for participating in this process.
Thank you, and I guess I'll end with, with my thank you, and this probably was a little bit unusual, the start of, start of whole process was something unusual, but we had the time, and you did come out, you did take your time to come out, and I think a number of us felt that we need, if you had something to say, we wanted to hear it, and we are appreciative of your efforts to make this a better city than it already is. So, with that, I'll take a motion. Does there, does anybody have a motion to adjourn, potentially? I hear a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We're through. Thank you all very much for coming.